I'd like to call this meeting into Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the pledge and remain standing as Rodney leads us in prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Father God, thank you again for bringing us together. We ask you to again give us wisdom and clarity of mind as we make decisions for the city. We glorify and bless your name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please, Jill.
Mr. Clark.
Here. Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Boat.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Public participation. In-person participation. No one signed the sheet here at the meeting. Remote participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone this evening more?
No, it's Tom Reed and Ian Clark. I'm watching. I couldn't hear them. They are.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't you call them? Ian? Ian Clark?
Yes, sir.
We can't hear you.
He's trying to speak.
Yeah, I'm speaking. And it's picking me up. I think it's picking me up.
Thank you. We got you.
Tom, are you on that too?
Was that Tom?
Yeah, I'm on.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Consent agenda. Approval of documents in action items is listed. Claims report claims dated November 15, 2022 through November 24th, or 28, 2022. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes, November 14, 2022. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, October 17, 2022. Budget report, October 2022. Treasurers report, October 31, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I just had one clarification and one comment, I guess. So the general fund, it said 9.1 million in the general fund. Is that what you were considering reserves or is that something completely different?
It said in the tre-
In the treasurer's report.
So that would-
General fund, they said 9.1 million. That's what we consider?
I believe so.
Okay, all right. The other thing that I noticed was CPPRT is at 4.2 million for this year. Is there a thought? Is it all going to go, we are all going to put it back in reserves or there's other projects or things that we can use the difference in what we budgeted for? I'm just thinking specifically the trail that we have in the budget for 2023, could we take some of these funds and actually move towards getting the trail completed? Or we have to, will it naturally evolve into 24 anyway?
Well, any, anything, revenues that were witnessed over what we budgeted automatically go to reserves for the following years.
Correct. I get that.
If the council does want to not only purchase the bike and hike trail extension and do the boundary survey work that we've already budgeted, proposed for 2023, if the council wants to do all the improvements in 2023, we can do that.
Or whatever else that we want to, you know, other than it going towards, we have some things that, that, that is an example that we could do with that, with the overage potentially.
Yeah. The state's fiscal is different than our fiscal.
I understand that.
It's almost an unknown how much we'll actually receive in revenues, whether it is our budgeting.
But that's significantly, the 4.2 billion is significantly over what we budgeted for this year, so.
Absolutely.
Like double, right?
If we budget 1.5 million.
Two and a half. Two and a half.
Two and a half this year?
Yeah. Okay. Just a thought, planting a seed, I guess, of potential.
1.5 for 2022.
Oh, yeah, well, the coming year though is 2.5, right?
Yeah. So, okay.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Hearing or seeing none, you please call the roll.
Ms. Muse.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report, I have no report this evening, other than the Christmas parade is on Saturday. And any council members that would like to participate and throw candy to the community, please let Jill know as soon as possible, like almost instantly after the meeting, so that we can relay information so he can make sure that we have clean vehicles to participate. Thank you. New business. Ordinance 2022-46 and ordinance approving the first amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Ella Property Development LLC concerning the property located 216 to 220 West Washington Street, Monticello. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of a reoccurring theme here with these redevelopment agreements and shortages in labor and supplies and so on. So Ella Properties has requested a time extension to their redevelopment agreement that was executed by the council under what's the Business Improvement Grant Program through our business district and other public-private partnership. So the estimated project is $23,557.81. They were awarded not to exceed $10,000 and it's a reimbursement, if you will recall. The staff is asking for an extension of the project of a completion date, March 31, 2023.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Hearing or seeing none. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-46?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments now? Questions? Roll call, please, Jill.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinance 2022-47 and ordinance approving the replat of Williamsburg Court Subdivision, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, 2022-47 is a replat of the Williamsburg subdivision here in Piatt County. Mr. Ed Clancy of Burners Clancy and Associates is the surveyor. Mr. Barbara Camer is the owner. They've submitted a replat for the Williamsburg subdivision and supporting documents to the city staff for review. The subdivision is within city limits. For reference, it's off of State Street, just south of Leo Lane. The subdivision must have the city's review and the council approved by way of ordinance based on the city's municipal code, section 152.02, in that way jurisdiction applies to every subdivision as defined herein occurring inside the corporate limits of the City of Monticello. The property is already annexed into the city. The subdivision currently has two homes built on it and consists of four lots. The newly proposed block configuration does not have any issues with setbacks. There are no public improvements proposed for the, proposed for or needed for this replat. And the access, as I said, will come from State Street. This is, this is an existing, when they first did the subdivision, it was four lots. When they built the houses, they went ahead and basically each home occupies two lots. They just want to make it right now.
Thanks.
I believe that Mrs. Camer is likely going to sell one of those, one of those houses. So it's recommended the city council discuss and approve the replat of the Williamsburg Court subdivision in Piatt County as submitted today.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Jim?
So it's going from four to two?
Yes.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-47?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Are we done? Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 2022-48, a resolution for mixed-use occupancy, 315 West Washington. Jim?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, resolution 2022-48 is granted conditional use permit for a mixed-use occupancy at 315 West Washington, City of Monticello. The applicant, TNR Event, TNR Ventures, Mr. Todd Thorndyke is requesting a conditional use permit for mixed-use occupancy at the 315 West Washington building. I provided a little picture there. It's that, it's the red building. The parcel is owned B to business and the proposed use is a retail shop and Airbnb, which requires a conditional use permit. A copy of the public notice was published in the November 2, 2022 edition of the Piatt County Journal Republican. There's a vicinity map and a photo and the resolution. The public hearing was held. There were a few comments regarding whether or not we needed to do this, but after speaking with Callie and I, we decided if the resolution is to approve the mixed use, not the Airbnb and not the retail shop, in that it's zone business, each one of those can exist in that building with no issues or fault by rights. But in the fact that they want to do both of them, it's going to require a conditional use being presented and approved by you. The PZB had the hearing, like I said, and that was the only comment, just clarification on that. And it's in front of me now, so it's recommend the city council discuss and approve conditional use permit for the mixed-use occupancy at the address commonly known as 315 West Washington at today's date.
Thank you.
The PZB recommended it passed?
Yes, recommended to approve it.
Any comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution 2022-48, a resolution for mixed-use occupancy, 315 West Washington Street? Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any additional comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to ordinance 2022-49, an ordinance awarding a residential waste hauling franchise and license. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all may recall, we began this process on June 13, 2022 with discussion. Discussion followed on August 8, 2022. We received the two proposals, one from GFO, one from Republic Services. At the regularly scheduled city council meeting on Monday, November 14, a motion was made and passed enter into a contract with Republic Services for exclusive rights for residential refuse and recycling in Monticello. I would mention your exhibits attached is the original RFP and exhibit two is Republic Services proposal. And then exhibit three is the contract. The attorneys are fine tuning the contract. So with passing of this ordinance, the mayor and legal will finalize the contract when all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So it is recommended to, that the city council discuss and approve ordinance 2022-49 as presented. And then, of course, this is in accordance with the time schedule for consideration for implementation on January 1 of next year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-49 and ordinance awarding a residential waste hauling franchise and license?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there comments or questions?
So will you come back with the contract approval or is that?
It's done.
It's done. You're just, formality. Okay. So this is, this is the actual, okay.
Any other comments, questions?
I had a question from a person in my ward. If you want to opt out of the service, do you simply let the company know or do you let us know or do they call to say that they don't want them picking up their trash?
That's a good question. You can be exempt from refuse and recycling. And I would, I would, at this time, commend Nicole Stewart, Maura Metcalf, and Jill Potts on all of their efforts to get this ready to roll out in January. It has been a very difficult time-consuming process. So if you're eligible to be exempt, you will be receiving a postcard in the mail, separate from your water bill. It'll be a postcard, a two-sided postcard that's easy to read and you could check a box to be exempt from the program. Just, and stick it in the mail and it'll get mailed back to the city hall.
But that's to be exempt. That's not to opt out. Exempt means that there, that you have a business in town where you can take your trash.
That's one exemption.
Okay. There's more than one exemption?
Yes.
Okay. And the others are?
It depends if it's, maybe you're an employee, a business owner that has a business in town, not just the owner. Certain other are in, are eligible to be exempt. I don't know what all the exemptions are off the top of my head, Rodney.
But it doesn't sound like there's just an opt-out.
No, this is the only waste hauler exclusive rights to operate in the City of Monticello.
Yeah. So if you don't get a card, you don't have them to-
Everybody's-
No, everyone gets the card.
Card, but you have an exemption, a pre-approved exemption to opt out.
Yeah, so you, you want to either exempt out or you, you'll return the card for service.
That's, we tried to make it as simple as possible with if you want garbage, don't do anything.
Yeah.
That's, it's only the people that don't want it that need to return that.
That makes sense.
Yeah, to me. And also the fee, and I, I know I read it, but I'm just, is the fee locked in for a certain period of time with this contract or did I read where it was eligible for a percentage increase yearly?
It's, the first year is $23.50.
Right.
There's 4% increases over the next four years.
4% a year. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments?
I guess I do have a question. Did they say when they will switch over the totes? Will there be any instructions for people that don't already have their totes, you know, to set them out on a, or will, well, maybe it'll just be on regular trash day, they'll just swap them out? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. So there's an advertisement in last week's newspaper. We'll put something online probably tomorrow. It explains your current waste hauler is responsible for removing your existing carts. The new carts are scheduled to be delivered beginning, I think, December 27.
It's a fan.
About the last week in December.
Yeah.
You will get Republic Services refuse and recycling carts. The current hauler is responsible for removing your current carts.
Got it.
And the advertisement explains that and then we'll put it on the website, social media, so on.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2022-50, an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 50 of the City of Monticello Code of Ordinances to Adopt Regulations Governing Regime. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this ordinance amends the particular section of the municipal code. So we will go revise all the four licenses and all that language and adopt this to create the legal mechanism inside the municipal code for this water hauler system. So it's recommended city council discuss and approve ordinance 2022-50 so we can amend it for the municipal code.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-50?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Comments or questions? It's an echo chamber.
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to fiscal year 2023 budget update discussion only. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Revisions were needed to be made to the proposed question. What I would like to, to propose is approval at the following city council meeting, the first meeting in December. So Maura has helped me generate some new sheets, page seven. And I would ask that you just remove the existing pages in your hard copies and just insert these. So page seven, line 75, building maintenance, I'm in the Public Works Department. We would, I believe I mentioned the possibility of a couple of generators, one for the maintenance building for Trevor Moore and one for the Public Works building as well. They do not have proper backup, as we learned in that power outage. So you'll see building maintenance, $44,500. That equates to an additional $40,000 from what was provided earlier. That's it on page seven. Page 14, line 806, that's the new line item due to discussions from June to July about residential refuse recycling program. You'll see on line 806, the city is going to be doing the, that will be included inside your water bill. So your water bill will now have a water fee, a sewer fee, and a garbage fee. I have to, we have to make provisions to show that revenue. So you'll see that revenue again on line 806. Right, and calculate the folks that will take management of the program. Again, that number is $50,000 FY 2023. See, on the next page, on line 806, you'll see a residential recycling program. In the water department, $524,000. Or 500,000, I'm sorry. So it's, it's a wash, if you will. We're going to collect the money and then we're going to give it to Republic Services. There's a revenue, there's an expenditure. Does that make sense? That only changes on the water.
Shouldn't that be slightly different as they are supposed to be paying us to do like a buck or a buck fifteen or a buck twenty to-
Republic is not paying us to do that. That was GFO.
Okay. Trevor, I'm sorry. Can we get them to pay us? It's too late, never mind.
On the next page, so on page, back up, in page 13, that added, we wrote $30,000 for generators. You'll see with line 783, now they have $4,428. Page, page 17, Maura and Nicole have done a tremendous job of analyzing sewer rates for the City of Monticello. These rates were kind of projected back in 2016. The sewer rate, if you recall, was supposed to go up $1 each and every year, is that correct, Maura? And that's what we have been doing. But with the efforts of utility billing clerk Nicole Stewart and finance director Maura Metcalf, we feel that we can, beginning next year, propose a 50 cent increase and not a dollar. And we would propose 50 cent increase next year, 2024 and 2025. And then, in beginning 2026, the way the projections look, we would, we would propose a 10 cent increase for the sewer fees. So the proposed 2023 budget of line 902 and 907 reflects not $1 fee increase, but a 50 cent fee increase. And on page 18, on line 97 and 99, reflects, 997 reflects obviously a decrease in the revenue because we're not doing $1, we're doing 50 cents. So you'll, you'll see a change in total sanitation and ion revenues less expenditures and a rev of $27,737. That is what we would like to propose moving forward to adoption of the proposed 2023 budget.
Comments or questions?
You did what you had to do, so.
We're at a very good place. I can't, I can't thank Maura or Nicole enough to, literally, they're saving the citizens 50 cents monthly every, for the next three years, and that goes down to a dime. So I thank them for their efforts.
That's awesome. Appreciate, appreciate all of you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing or seeing none, move on. Is that okay? Is that all you needed?
That's all.
There was no voting, I know that, so.
No, I was just wondering if you have a question.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that very much. All their persons reports, uh, let's start with Mary.
I noticed last week there were some, there was a city truck going around, and it appeared to pick up trash. My understanding is our current waste hauler is not providing service for new residents, is that accurate?
Correct. So somebody new moves to town, or you get a new, you've moved from one location in the city to a new home, cannot get trash from the current hauler, so.
So, so they'll, they'll refund us for the city doing their job under the current contract? That's in jest. Thank you to the city workers for taking care of that. It's frustrating that we're under contract and they're not meeting their obligation.
Yeah, the Public Works guys did not hesitate to pick up that, and it's, it's a small workload, but it, it's a workload they didn't have.
It's not responsibilities that were planned for, but like everything, the job's getting done, and it's getting done well, so please extend my thanks to them, and it sounds like we made the right decision on, on switching to trash haulers.
I don't-
I think you're smart.
Rodney?
The guys did a great job on the park, on Rotary Park. Ready to see that full show anytime soon?
It's-
Soon? Understood.
So it, it's, it's coming along pretty fast. We're making changes, we're trying to get it, providing features, we're getting them online, it's, it's gonna be really cool.
Very cool, thank you. Good job.
Mike?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Ian?
Nothing tonight, thank you again.
Ashley?
Nothing this evening, other than I did wanna say, I really noticed that the city looks really nice with all the Christmas decorations on, Polar Express started, and I think when people come to town.
It looks great already, you're right, thanks. Terry, you got a report this evening?
I don't have anything, Nick, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. City administrators report?
I have nothing tonight.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Oh, no? Member of the-